Okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting of March 2nd of the Brandon City Council to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance for all.
Christina, you want to call the roll?
Clark here, David Fish.
Here.
Dergensen.
Here.
Poe.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
If I could have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved second.
Motion second to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have two sets of minutes from February 13th and 18th if I could have a motion to approve those.
Who to approve?
Second.
Motion second to approve minutes from February 13th and 18th. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Bills and claims were submitted with your agenda packet. I could have a motion to approve those.
So moved second.
Motion is second to approve the bills and claims as submitted with the agenda. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anybody from the community that would like to address the council at this time may do so. Hearing none, we'll keep going with our agenda. We have a public hearing for a off-sale liquor license for CC&amp;F Retail, Retail's Incorporated. Brian?
Doing business at Coffee Cup Fuel Stop number seven at 1009 North Split Rock Boulevard.
Any questions, comments?
We haven't received any comments.
I'm going to motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the off-sale liquor for CC&amp;F Retailers Incorporated. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 596, the small cell wireless facilities.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve ordinance 596. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have quite a list of summer staff for the golf course that we need to approve. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second to approve the listing of summer staff as presented in your packet. Any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our parks director submitted a list of approved trees that can be planted in our community. If I could have a motion to approve that listing.
So moved. Second.
As presented. Any questions on that? Quite an extensive list, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a first reading of ordinance 604, the tree pesticide applicator license. Motion approve that.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second to approve ordinance 604. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have the second annual request for the use of McCarty Park for McCarty Market on April 30th through May 2nd. If I could have a motion to approve that request.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second to approve the request for the use of McCarty Park for McCarty Market on April 30th through May 2nd. Any questions?
The park board did recommend that we approve that request.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution number 6 dash 20 is the setting of a whole lot of fines and fee schedules. This listing has been reviewed by our attorney and our chief of police, therefore I request a motion from the council.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second to approve the list, resolution 6 dash 20, setting the fine amounts as presented in the packet. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Need a motion to approve a wage adjustment for Zachary Kiefer at, to set his salary at $20.29 an hour after passing the...
Law enforcement academy.
Yes.
He graduated on Friday.
Law enforcement academy, congratulations to him. If I could have a motion to approve that wage.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second to approve the wage adjustment for Zachary Kiefer at $20.29 an hour. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Finally, I get to quit talking here and somebody else gets to talk. ISG is going to give us a final report on our space needs study. Gentlemen, you're on the mic. You can turn mine off.
All right, there we go. So I'm Josh Muckernhorn with, an architect with ISG.
I'm Brian Paulson, an architect with ISG.
And so we were here back in January, I believe, to kind of give some of the initial background of the process for the spatial analysis, kind of where we were at. So today, our plan is just going to give a quick, very brief overview of that, that again, I know we don't want to spend too much time. I know you guys had that process previously, but in case there's any new individuals in the audience that were just curious, we just want to give a quick analysis or a rundown of that. So, the, just kind of a quick overview, we just, we met with some of the department leads and heads and kind of went through the space needs, kind of where, where the facility is currently standing, and then kind of understanding the 20, 25-year needs where the city plans to continue to grow. And then with that, we kind of put together a spatial inventory and started sketching out some conceptual site plans while we were looking at some various sites around the city as well. So I believe the next portion would really be getting into just an overview of some of the space needs comparison, just to kind of give a summary of the existing facility compared to what some of the findings in the space, spatial inventory that we found, based on the level of staff and some of the spaces that would be required with that. So as you can see, there's a significant difference in that, but mind you, this is that kind of looking out into the future where the city really sees you guys to grow. And the public works, again, just an overview of that. Currently, it's operating out of three different facilities, so kind of what we looked at was consolidating those three down into a single facility just for some efficiencies and having everything right on site. So just running through some of the site considerations, this was, right now, the proposed public works site was up in that kind of left-hand side, the, one of the proposed city hall sites was in the middle, kind of at the top there, and then just kind of showing, giving an idea where the existing public works facilities are all kind of spread out throughout the city, and then the existing city hall. And then the next slide is kind of just giving a overview, kind of small up there, but we looked at three, or six really, seven, sorry, seven sites for the city hall and police department, just kind of giving an analysis of those, seeing how the space and the floor plan would fit on those, as well as kind of analyzing if it was a good fit for a city hall building based on proximity and location. So then just on these next slides will be kind of a rundown of each one of those. So Site A was the existing site that we're currently on right now, so it'd be reusing this site. It would require a demo of the existing facility. When we get into the conceptual site plan, you'll be able to see, in order to fit the floor plan, it would require some land acquisition around the site. So then Site B was located kind of on the west side of town. Looked at this one, it had, it was kind of a green site, kind of flat right on the road there, but we kind of steered away from that just due to mostly proximity, kind of being on the outskirts of town, being city hall, was kind of preferred to be closer in the middle, middle of town. So Site C is right off of East Holly Boulevard, and it's currently the Navara Building right now, and that would have required an acquisition, an either a addition onto that or a demo for that facility. So we kind of looked away or steered away from that one for some of those reasons. Site D was just north of the Risen Savior Parish, just kind of that kind of dirt area there that's currently undeveloped. And Site E, which is kind of the site that was really honed in on and kind of explored more for this, for the purposes of this study, is just north of the Celebration United Methodist Church, and that land is currently owned by the church, but from our understanding, they've been already contacted and are aware that this is a potential site, and they're open to discussions. And then Site F was just south of the fire department, but that one was kind of written off due to some of the challenges with the terrain, very steep and sharp drop-offs and slopes going on there. And then G is on the south side of Aspen Park, and that one really was, again, kind of further away from the central, center of city compared to the Site E that we were looking at, and would require some additional utilities, expansions. So getting into some of the conceptual designs, the existing city hall, we just have that, again, just the existing site, this was kind of one of the main two options, and then the next slide will show the, kind of the floor plan, and it's kind of hard to see the property boundaries on there, but it really would require, like I had mentioned, acquiring a majority of the land surrounding the site. And then jumping over to the potential site that was really kind of honed in on for the purposes of this study, nothing's final at this point, but it's just kind of one that we really used to study, the floor plan. It kind of shows the layout and how that, that would fit. There's plenty of space on the site for development and expansion if needed in the future, and plenty of onsite parking, and it's really kind of a flat green site right now, so the site is really ready compared to some of the other ones that we looked at to be constructed That's just kind of a bigger floor plan with some additional detail to it. But then kind of jumping into some of the numbers that, when we started putting this together based on the square footage and some of the, some other facilities that we've worked on and seen recently, just kind of got some ballpark numbers on here, and there's a range in the, in each of these just due to the schematic level that it's still at, still kind of in the programming, so there's still room to either kind of steer it towards the lower end or the upper end depending on material finishes and construction costs just given time and phasing and whatnot. But just looking at the building cost right now, I mean, it's, the building itself is about 34,500 square feet, and with that, that the building would come to just around the seven, 7 million. And then the soft costs, which would be items such as the surveys, the A&E fees, the soil borings permitting, any of the financing fees, that's about that 750 to 900, and that's typically around that 10 to, or 9 to 11 percent range, sometimes up to the 12 is kind of what we've seen. And then FFNE, furniture fixtures and equipment, is around the 4 to 500, which is about the 5 to 7 percent range of the building costs is what we've really kind of seen on some recent projects. And then the 450 to 5 would be the site work, just, and that would include paving, the parking lot, the site prep to get ready for the building. So with all that, that kind of comes to the 8.3 to 9.2 million for the city hall and police department facility. So I don't know if we want to continue on to the public works and kind of run through that and then open up for questions. All right. So looking at the public works site, right now, this site is currently owned by the city, so there wouldn't be any land acquisition costs with that, and that pond that's kind of shown in the background is currently filled in. It's kind of a dated Google Maps image, so it's all currently flat right now, but this is the, the building is, right now, it's showing about six to, what is that, seven maintenance bays with a wash bay and some offices and a parking garage, and all these are kind of the pull-through, so there wouldn't be any having to back in or pulling them back And then getting to the cost estimate for that one, and this is assuming kind of something more of a, along the lines of like a precast building or something like that rather than a, like a stud facility, but the building cost for that is around the 3.3 to 3.5 million for those. Soft costs, again, with the same AE fees, survey, soil borings, et cetera, would be about the 600 to 700, and then the furniture fixtures and equipment is quite a bit significantly less than the office, or the city hall and the public police department building, simply because there's a little less of those office spaces and whatnot, but a majority of that would be kind of the storage and then some of the few offices that are in there. And the site work on this one, there's a, there's a significant asterisk on this, so what we had assumed on that number was essentially the worst-case scenario, if you will, of paving the entire site. So and that comes, and that would include the site surrounding the, the building along with the access road, so all that white, kind of everything that's in that white right there is what would be assumed to be paved, which is a, about four acres, I believe, and it's about 9,200 tons of asphalt. So it's quite significant, that's not something that would need to be done right away. Again, this was just done for kind of worst-case scenario. What would be recommended probably would be paving kind of the darker areas initially, just because that's where a lot of the heavy loading into the storage bays and salt basin would occur with the remainder of it could, you know, it could be left as gravel, it could be paved over time and what have you. So that, that number for the site work would be anticipated, it wouldn't, it would be cut down depending on how the city would like to pave that site. And in total, that comes to about that 5.5 to 6.2 million. So I believe with that, can open up to questions, discussions?
Questions from the council?
I would just make the comment for the council's purposes, their, their numbers are very strong. You're erring on the side of caution very cautiously. We have just, we just finished opening up the bids for a new school, about a $15 million school, and the construction, site work, everything was about $180, $180 a square foot. So I think their numbers are pretty strong. Obviously, there's strength in numbers, and it's proportionally smaller than a, than a new school, so it would have some bearing on that, but that would be my only comment or takeoff of your stuff.
And we're just, we have a public works building in Fairmont, Minnesota, that's about $165 a square foot right now, and it's, it's larger than what we're proposing, but I, we are being fairly cautious. I think that site number on the public works number is strong.
And there's a lot of things that have to be figured out that...
Yeah, oh yeah.
Right. I have a bus barn that I don't, I can't even afford to do a drive-through. I mean, it's nice to have that drive-through that you never back out, but nice isn't always practical either. It becomes cost prohibitive and whatnot, so there's a lot of things that need to be considered when we look at this.
And we said we'd have to come up with some way to finance it through our, through our cash flow to make this work, so we're talking, did you run the number, what that would be a year?
I have not. Significant. Definitely be a situation with, which this, we would have to phase in a lot of these buildings. Couldn't be done all at once, for sure. Any other questions, comments? I thank you guys, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We'll try to keep it on the front burner, Brian, and see where we can go. It all becomes part of our overall document that I'll continue to hound you on. Everything is a priority, it's just we have to, we have to be, have to be able to see all those priorities in black and white before any decisions can be made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, item D2, we have been presented with a fireworks petition to allow the aerial fireworks to be shot off on July 3rd and 4th, just to the petition, and my understanding that just needs to be acknowledged by the Brandon City Council, it'll be on the ballot April 14th.
Right.
Okay, so let it, record show that it has been acknowledged, it will be on the ballot April 14th. Next up on our agenda, we have three pickups that we received bids for, surplus property bids for, $2,000 for 2006 F-350 pickup, and $350 each for two 2008 F-150 pickups. If I could have a motion to approve those.
Who to approve?
Bids. Motion is second to approve the surplus pickup bids as I just delineated. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F1, there's a agreement with the current property owners that we'll present to them, Brian, is that correct?
Correct.
The council needs to approve these agreements that we will propose for water barriers for the citizens that are going to be affected by this. If I could have a motion to approve that agreement that the administration is proposing?
Gentlemen. Second.
Motion is second to approve the water barrier agreement with current property owners that we will present to them in the future. Any questions?
Please take a peek at this.
She wrote it.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F2, we have a water tower amendment for engineering services with Stockwell Engineers of additional $109,572. What we are proposing to do is drop the two water tower proposal down to one water tower proposal, obviously back to what I referred to earlier, there's strength in numbers, so the fees go up proportionally when there's only one water tower in the, in the project. It's an addition of $109,572 with Stockwell Engineers. Can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the amendment for the water tower agreement, engineering services agreement with Stockwell engineer, engineers adding additional $109,572, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Do you know what our timeframe is, when that's going to get started?
We've got to have our application into the state, April 1st, I think, is the deadline, so we'll start taking it fairly soon.
We have a public hearing next meeting for the loan and stuff, so it's...
Item number F4, we have an amendment for the engineering services with, once again, Stockwell Engineers for the Main Avenue Interceptor Project, the construction administration of that project, just due to the delays...
Correct.
That project is carrying over into two years, so there will be additional $240,000 of contract administration on that project with Stockwell Engineers. Can I have a motion to approve that amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve, approve an additional $240,000 to Stockwell Engineers for construction administration on the Main Avenue Interceptor Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F4, we have a draft of a grease trap ordinance.
Yep.
That's all yours.
Staff has been meeting with several of the fats and grease businesses in town over the last few weeks. I think there's been three meetings, two or three meetings with them. It seems to be going well. This would, would tighten up the regulations related to the fats and grease getting into the sanitary sewer system, and would require some type of either a grease interceptor or a separator, one smaller than the other.
What else do you want to know? Any questions from the council? Comments?
So I presume we feel that this is a problem, that as we grow, we just need to nip it in the bud?
It's, it's kind of been an ongoing problem in some areas of town. Fats and grease, when they accumulate in the wastewater system, do cause blockages, so if we can get those out of the system before it gets in there, if you pour even hot grease down the sewer, they will eventually solidify as the grease cools. We can't necessarily always track where that grease is coming from because it's further down the line than, than where it enters the system. And then as, as we, you know, discharge all of our waste to Sioux Falls, you know, we try to be in compliance with, with their regulations. So this is, this is a step up from what we've done in the past. As we continue to grow, you know, assuming that we get more, and I don't just want to say businesses, but contributors to the system, whether they be apartment buildings or businesses or typically restaurants, grocery stores, et cetera, if we can control it at the source instead of letting it get into the system, we're better off.
Just to add on to that, it's also an issue for the lift stations, and there's pictures shown at those meetings for the public of what that, that looks like, so it's, it's a problem that gets that far down, too.
This will come back as a formal ordinance?
Yep, this was a draft. You know, our typical process is that we'll provide you with a draft first, try to answer any of your questions before we get it into a final draft, or final ordinance stage, and then we'll have our first two readings. The first reading will be at the next council meeting.
This is your chance, folks.
I'll just add that I, I feel like, like our staff's doing a great job with this, and they're, they're being very lenient in how they're setting it up. It's really kind of a baby step approach. At this point, we're not even defining like the sizes of the contributors. When we first started looking at this, that was where we were, but we've, we've really evolved and adapted it to be a lot more flexible for the FSEs, and Dale is very implemental in working on plans and has some pilot entities that are working with him on it, so it's really more about them setting up their own plan. Raleigh, you guys have anything to add to...
Yeah, I guess it was, we included churches, daycares, the school, food service providers, whether it was... whether it was actually being prepared or whatever there. Seems like the, everybody that we talked to was pretty receptive of it. Had a few that showed up that we didn't know if they were going to this last meeting, and that was a good showing there, so. Yeah, and like Dana said, I don't think we're, we haven't even defined the violations rules yet because it's just the baby steps. We'll get the plan in place first, and we'll go from there and see what happens with it. It's kind of trying to make them help self-monitor their, their position, where they're at, you know, making sure that they're doing their maintenance first, and we don't want to have to be the grease cops either, so.
Very good. Item number F5 is to approve a construction administration proposal from HDR to administer the construction on the Core Area Reconstruction Project. That's in the amount of $475,960. If I can have a motion to approve that?
So move.
Motion of second to approve the Core Phase 1 Construction Administration Proposal in the amount of $475,960 to HDR. Any questions? All those in favor? We'll have the formal contract at your next, next meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any new business?
Not any new business. I was just gonna say that I was appreciative of the statement that our staff put out in regards to the altered water report. I think that that was good for the public to have a little bit of ability to follow that and know where that's at, so, thank you.
Anything else? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn at 6:34. Motion of second to adjourn at 6:34 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
You've got to drag these out a little bit more.
No, no, no. No, no. You're all right.
Tonight, I think.
Should be, yeah, should be a little go 45. You're okay.
Trying to earn that $5,000 budget paid or what?
You're still okay.